And then the other part of it is how determined it was. Do you want to be every year?
Well, that last month they said we instructed Scott to go with three year without, if you had no issues that you free up once every three years.
That's what the ordinance says and maybe Mark there. Yeah, I'm not sure, but it still might be the issue with Marcus on what is this ten, thirty dollars and ten additional units? Is that for the entire licensing period or is it per year, two years?
Well, I think it'd be, the intent for me was for that would be for the licensing period because the incentive then is to run a good operation and then you don't have to pay, you know, the fee. If we're not in it to generate revenue, which I hope we're not, and it sounds like we're not, then what we're really in it for is to encourage best practices and that's what I'm after. And so if you can say, well, if you run a, if you run a tight ship, if you do a good job, we don't have to see you again until three years from now. If you get into trouble, you got problems there, you're not fixing them, you're coming back every year. That was my intent anyway.
Yeah, I think the resolution will fit that because it doesn't specify, it basically says the rental premises registration certificate, which would be a three-year term unless there's a decent.
So then you're talking about a fee to cover the three-year period. So.
Well, for as long as the certificate would last up to three years.
Yeah, as long as they follow the rules, then three years. So.
Let's go. Doing it once, not doing it over every year.
Right, right.
So gents, what did we settle for a number this time?
I would move to go the thirty dollars plus ten per additional unit of two to three years.
One second, Dan.
Hey, can I amend that? Maximum of a hundred dollars.
Okay.
But does your second still stand?
Yes.
Uh huh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Done deal, folks.
And then the last item you had was a summary publication resolution to save the city money. We haven't published the ordinance yet. It's adopted as of last meeting. It is to be effective July first, so that's why we didn't rush ahead and publish it. But it's a simple resolution. If you vote in favor of this, Mark publishes the summary instead of the entire ordinance and then it becomes effective next time.
Mark, will there be an effort by the city to reach out to at least the ones that we know?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll have to publicize it, put it in, just let our instincts do their stuff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have, you know, through utility records.
Yeah.
We have pretty much all of them, you know, nailed down. So, I mean, yeah, it's not going to be that. There may be a few outliers like house rentals or something we don't know about, but I mean, generally we'll have all of them covered.
Because this ordinance now replaces the, that old one, but no one ever enforced the old one. So I, you know, we'll have to get the word out that this is, it's smaller.
I really, really, really mean it this time.
It's very reasonable, but we're actually enforcing this one. Because otherwise they can see some of them saying, now, we just replaced one unenforced ordinance with another one. They don't have to lose any sleep on that.
There'll be a lot of questions initially. We'll give them copies of the ordinance so they can see what's involved in it.
Okay. Well, that's good. Well, so, yeah, as long as the city makes a effort to reach out to the ones that we at least know about, then I will move forward with the approving the summary publication of the ordinance resolution. Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirteen.
Let's check with that one then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. Getting down to own business now. Emergency slash mass notification software program.
So there's two proposals that are in the packet for emergency mass notification software. Both programs would allow the city to notify residents via multiple platforms, including text, phone, email, social media, and through an app that both these companies have. Both programs would allow the notification areas to be set by geo fencing, geo, you know, through GPS that way. So they're both good that way. The cost of the two programs, the alert fine is twelve eighty-one annually and code red is fifteen hundred. After viewing both of them, both programs, demonstrations of both programs, the department heads and I would recommend the code red software. Both programs offer scalable notifications on multiple platforms, but since the code red program is currently utilized by Goody County National Weather Service, it would be a lot, it would be more efficient. They would use their existing database of residents from those programs. So it is, it is higher annually, you know, a few hundred dollars, but that would be our, my recommendation to be go with that, so.
So Mark, just a couple of questions. So if I'm already registered under the Goody County one for the code red, now would I have to register again?
No.
Okay, so we have the efficiency, scale of efficiencies there.
Yes.
The second thing is, will I get multiple, like if there's a tornado coming, am I going to get one notification from the county and then one from the, like, are we going to be duplicating?
No, no. You're only going to get notifications if we put out.
Okay.
Concerning city matters, so we're not going to get involved with anything the county would do, the sheriff's department would do, or the National Weather Service for that matter, just like the county does it crossover with the National Weather Service.
Yeah. So. So this is more or less if there's flooding, taking out part of the road that you.
Yep.
We send out, don't travel west on, I mean, highway sixteen.
Yes, because it could be disaster stuff, it could be construction work, it could be power outages. I, we don't have all that framed up yet.
Situation that comes to mind from a few years ago. Excuse me, Dan, I just tanked out here. Val got knocked off and quite a number of us were evacuated for a portion of the evening, got it repaired.
It could be administrative things too, you know. Well, it's kind of a work in progress.
The one thing that I commented on back when the county adopted this was to be very, very careful with messages you're sending out because it can end up becoming where I'm getting noticed that, you know, well, tomorrow's spring or whatever, you know, that eventually I'm going to take it off my phone because I don't want to get bothered by all the messages.
You're drawing a picture of that wolf in the neighborhood.
Just be judicious with the messages going out and I think that that way, because that way when it does buzz and I look at it, I know it actually matters.
Yep.
So.
You want the meat and potatoes and the beef and that's it?
That's it. Yeah.
Yeah. When do I start?
Um, well, if it gets approved tonight, possibly may. We have to go through training and setup with them. I don't know how long it's going to take them to get the database ready, but hopefully within a couple of months, if not sooner.
Well, I, for less than a dollar a resident, it's, hopefully we won't need to use it, but if we do, it's an efficient way to get a message out there. And I, and I like the idea of not doing the redundancies. So I'll go with the administrator's recommendation that we go with code red software for fifteen hundred a year.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. Discuss possible use of ambulance garage for police department offices and facilities.
So the chief is here. The council hasn't talked about this a lot, but the EDA, which currently owns that building, has discussed this a little bit. They talked about it at the special meeting that they had last week. Basically, I did go back and I looked up as best I could, just kind of the history of that building, you know, how it was financed or, you know, how it was paid for when it was built. The building was built in nineteen ninety-nine and it was probably somewhere in the low two hundred thousand dollar range. And it was basically, the one I can piece together, there's not very clear records now, but it was paid for by the city and then when it was built, it was turned over to the EDA and it was leased to North Amulets. Well, then North Amulets eventually pulled out of Kenyon having a station here and just responded, which they do to the state comparable. And so the building has been used for a variety of things, including senior citizens, which you guys all know this, the Girl Scouts and other groups I think have used it. The police department uses, the fire department used it in the past before they got the new building. The parking part, but the police department has been using the parking bays and, you know, has other use. They have the on-call room in there. So what, what we're asking for is that that be utilized for the police department, the offices and everything moved to that building within, I mean, there's no set drop dead schedule or anything, but I mean, you know, within a period of time. There was twelve thousand dollars put in the twenty nineteen budget, you know, to help cover, and we don't have a handle on what would be done, but if you have modular offices, you know, furniture for the police and I don't know, use some kind of office for the chief. There's not going to have to be a ton of retrofitting in that building. Probably replace the carpet is the top of my list right now, but, you know, the, the main room is pretty open, so there's not going to be a lot of, you know, demo really that would have to be done to retrofit it. So that's what's kind of nice about it. So it's an open floor plan and it can be laid out and, you know, whether it's actual physical wall construction or modular hover that's done. We'll come back with options. Basically, to move ahead with this, what would happen is, what I would ask is the council pass a motion requesting the EDA basically convey that building back to the city. The EDA then would, you know, Scott's office could then put together the title work to convey it back to the city. And then at a time after that, then we would, we would come back with a plan to retrofit it and, you know, work with the chief and come up with the layout and that kind of stuff. That will come back to the council and try to get some cost estimates, obviously, so. So, I mean, it's going to take some time, but chief, I don't know if you have any.
Oh, yep, okay. Those are his apologies. I didn't want to talk about this and having them tumbling over, that would be bad. We've been in our current building for twelve years, the ones I've been here, twelve years now, and the sheriff's office used it before that. I love the building that we're in. It's a piece of history, that's great, but it certainly needs some updating and some work. We've got water leakage, we've got a swimming pool in the basement, we've got the front entry where we've just been a little apart. So we've been using the other building, which were very gracious and it's worked out great. When we first came to town, the only thing we did to the current building that we have is we had the floor replaced, we had it painted, and we had some new furniture purchased and that was really it. We've made everything else work and it's a very nice facility, but it's a little cramped at times and it's not super handicap accessible. Those doors are kind of wonky and I'm sitting in a wheelchair, that's one of my first things I always look at is the handicap accessibility in that building that we have right now currently is not. The Olino's building is a nice layout, it certainly needs some updating. What I envision is what would be the large room where the seniors play cards now and the Girl Scouts use, that could be all of our offices. When Cassin re-did their police department, they bought their own fire hall, I believe, and they found some really nice modular furniture, wall units and so forth on Craigslist. They really didn't pay hardly anything for that. And you know what, we're all about saving money when we can and stuff like that, so we don't need anything fancy. The on-call bedroom facility that we have, I would like to see that used yet as that, but in a more modern feel so we could also use it as a private interview room. One of the problems we have now is when you walk in, we have to have our door locked for doing a private interview. And so we have to lock the, like, have the door locked with a sign on the door that says interview in progress and people still knock on the door and tell us about dogs that are loose and parking and so forth. And it's really tough to have some privacy in there. The parking stalls we use in both right now, that houses everything from the freezer that we have to the food arrangements that we get to the animals that we have in our impound to both, and both bays are used in there, you know, for parking, our bikes are in there. There's a washer dryer in there that they don't use, sometimes they're uniformed it during your work. And so the on-call staff to use it, it's really worked out well. It's a very nice facility, we'd be honored to have it. It's still on Main Street, which I'm a big fan of, it's just a couple of doors down from where we're at now, but it certainly is going to need some some updating. So. I told Wayne I wanted the helicopter pad, he said I should mention that, so first thing. But I would be, would be very happy to have that, but it'd certainly work with whoever can, with that happening.
We'll have to work with the senior citizens as far as.
I wanted to mention that to him, sorry to interrupt, but I thought, I don't know what the purpose or if we have a plan for the building that we're in now, but maybe our seniors could, could use that for, for the card playing and so forth. If we can get those doors work better.
Don't we have a, I thought, a location down here?
I believe we do, but we still have something come down here and play, so I'm not quite sure.
It's what you're used to.
Yeah.
The rhyme's saying is, that would be nothing at all for.
But I certainly don't want to kick my seniors out. I love them to death. It's great that they're in there, so, but something else.
And that would be easier for handicap accessibility than over here. You got that.
Yeah. But I think.
You got a step up and then that's railing and it's not bigger than a walker that's going to be a real.
Some nice bright lighting in there.
And then a big bit of door.
Box put in there, so people could do that.
And you feel like security is no problem down there.
So we have to do something, envision part of the back, maybe putting in some chain links, we could do some of our larger evidence stuff back there, maybe some storage back in the garage area. But yeah, it's, it would be a very nice, and we'd be very appreciative of it. Any other questions with me?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that how much lighter are you now than when you got your?
A lot.
It's like forty pounds of loading?
Forty pounds of weight.
So the EDA is not going to charge this amount in the way of rebuilding that?
Well, the thing is, the city paid for this building to begin with.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh huh.
And it was at one time a revenue stream for EDA, but hasn't gone for quite a while.
It was financed and transferred to the EDA for the purpose of financing as the lease purchase of the deal. And that was the reason that was handed and put in the name of the EDA. It was purely to finance the building, but the city really paid.
Actually, I suppose the EDA has been paying utilities on it, so it's actually been a slight cost for some time.
Yeah, and I think the original intent with this, but I couldn't find it anywhere, was that it would get turned back to the city, but.
I think that's.
You know, like the normal lease revenue.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that's probably all inherent now, but.
It was just financed, they just took it out of reserves to pay part because it was like two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What about, so any opportunities to utilize the, you know, if we're switching buildings to use the current police station for anything?
Well, there potentially absolutely could be, you know.
Go back to KMU, which is what it was.
It could be used by us or, I don't know if it would be reasonable as an office, but I mean, it's going to be open, yeah, it certainly would have. It's not optimum, you know, building is an old, it's kind of a tank of a building and it's not very well, it's for handicap accessibility, but yeah, that's definitely something that, you know, we'll have to look at and, you know, because that would be available space. It's just like basically the ambulance garage right now.
Right.
Isn't really utilized.
Right.
It kind of just, to me, when I look at it, it's just kind of sitting there.
Yeah.
And so that's shift, been a shift now to a building that was built in two thousand or nineteen ninety-nine, which is in a lot better shape now, to being utilized, to an old building. I'd rather the old building be underutilized, is one trying to say.
Yeah.
So you need a motion. You need a motion. I'll make the motion. That we, how do you want to make it? Word it? That the EDA, EDA consider turning the building back over to the city of Kenyon or future police department?
Yeah, that request that they do that. Then it'll come up at their meeting in April.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. Now we move to new business. Kenyon Fire Relief Association requests for June twenty-second, twenty nineteen fireman dance. And I guess we have to have a separate motion for each of these. One is for a temporary liquor permit for that one day. The second for a dance permit for that day.
I would move that we approve the temporary liquor permit for the Fire Relief Association for the date stated.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we make the same motion for the dance permit for the date.
And what's in?
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving along. BFW liquor license renewal. Ah, no, we don't want to do that. They probably shouldn't have. Well, we'll make the motion on that one to renew it. For BFW. All in favor?
Aye.
Kenyon Senior Living Sprint for Seniors. Kenyon Senior Living is requesting council approval of the route for five K one walk on Saturday, May eleventh. Motion needed, you approve. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next is the informational item that tomorrow is the Board of Appeal and equalization. Isn't that appeal and equalization?
They're probably, yeah.
Equalization and appeal. I think it was the other way. Anyway, tomorrow at five o'clock, right here.
Interesting.
It'll be interesting to see how many people turn out of that weather event that's commenced by then. That might make a big difference.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna word this differently, but I was gonna make a blanket statement about these increases, but have you, have the council members gotten, you got your tax statements and did your values go up like quite a bit or?
Yeah, mine did. I got mine, but I haven't looked at it. On, uh, shop.
Okay.
It went up, if I'm correct on it, I looked at it, I believe it went up twenty thousand and the most that I did was put no improvement in outside of putting lawn fertilizer down last year. So that's my improvements.
My twenty thousand.
For twenty thousand bucks, that's a whole lot on that part, but I do have a question after you're done with.
So anyway, apparently a lot of the properties in town got a large increase that was due to, according to the assessor's office, an inflationary adjustment that they had to do and it was a state mandated, you know, the state comes in and reviews evaluations and they will tell a city, or they'll tell a county that a certain area needs to be bumped up because it's not keeping up with inflation or with comparables, you know, whatever, however they look at that. So, and that's what we were kind of told that that was the case. No, I kind of heard a mixed bag though, because I've talked to some people that had a twenty percent increase, some people had had not break bags. So I, that's why I'm not going to just throw out there that expect we're going to have stampede people coming in here because I don't know if we actually are. We have not had any calls from people, you know, complaining or with questions or anything. That doesn't mean that we're not going to have a lot of people showing up. And frankly, the board is the Board of Equalizations, the county, it's not you guys anyways, so there's really not much to talk about from what you could do about it, but anyway.
Um, yeah, so just so I understand, so you, in your memo, you said for twenty nineteen, the assessor's office staff will act as the board of adjustment and it will revert back to the city in twenty twenty. So have, because I don't know, I've never come to the city Board of Equalization before, but you know, so has the assessor's office always been?
No.
No.
This was a two-year or three-year.
Did give it to them for years?
Because we didn't have enough people, enough council members that were trained and.
Oh, I see.
That training.
Okay.
But now we'll get it back, make sure exactly we do.
Okay.
Yes, that was my question. I think Mike, Mayor Mike and myself are the only two on it.
We have to have two.
Two or was it three? Because last year we had two.
We had two.
You and I, but there was something that we.
It was supposed to be.
Or there was.
Yeah, maybe it is. I.
I think it's true.
I can't say, okay, so anyway, three of you.
It's long enough now that I took the training, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I think it's three. Because we had, whatever it was, it, we could not make the decision on it.
Right.
And we reverted back to the county for the fact that there wasn't a form.
Okay.
Over here, you and I.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they still do in-person trainings or is it all online now?
All online.
Okay.
I think it's online now. That just started a year ago.
Yeah. All right, well, yeah.
I'm in my third or fourth year now. I did it online.
So someone else then, I mean, so.
I'll, I'll do it. I, yeah, I've done it, you know, before, so it's not.
Yeah, it's not that.
No.
Okay, perfect. Anyone else wants to do it, you know, go for it?
Yeah, well, that, yeah, you do it, that'll be, that'd be good for that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we want to get it back local if, if, you know, it, you know, residents are going to show up and yell at us, we should at least be able to say, well, we can try something instead of saying, oh, you know, we can't do anything for you.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so I'd like to see it come back to the city, so. Not that it goes down to the county anyway, they have to make the final call, but we can at least try.
It's really not a hard test to do.
No.
You can do it online and then you can start it, finish it whenever you want.
Yeah.
And then they end it. Work on it as long as you want to and then we could go until you're ready to finish.
Yeah. It's just not very exciting.
That's good. Resolution twenty nineteen dash ten, authorizing investments and transfer of city funds with multi-bank securities, Inc.
These are all, there's three of these, so, these are all just depository endorsement resolutions that the council has to pass.
Yeah.
So we, we have funds in all these places currently, but we, the auditors told us that we have to.
Annual housekeeping.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, so many years we have to pass these things.
So we have a motion to approve that resolution. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash eleven, authorizing investments and transfer of city funds with Northland Securities.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty nineteen dash twelve, authorizing membership in the four M fund.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Downtown sidewalk repair.
So, um, included in the package is a proposal from a company that repairs steams on sidewalks. It kind of shows you when they're how, you know, exactly how they do that. They kind of melt down the higher part, so they kind of blends together with the, you know, where there's two panels of sidewalks that come together, two pieces of sidewalk, whatever you want to call them. There was seven thousand dollars put in the budget, or seventy-five hundred actually, but the proposal's seven thousand. Our plan would be to start with the downtown, but there's other parts of the city in subsequent years that we'd like to have them work on. So I don't know, do you have anything, Wayne?
I just had a. I just had a, um, I talked to with the company two years ago, and they gave us, um, did, that's all the blue numbers were on the sidewalks last year, the important, that was every proposed cut. They come in and they cut, they double the edges, so it makes the walking surface eighty-eight bladed. And it also helps with the snowbump, cause now the snowboard won't hit, that's why we had troubles with our, um, when we use the snowboard, it's when there's film always dropped down there, cause you had to heat up a little bit always to smack it every time. Um, so, I believe that their initial estimate, two years ago, for the entire, um, the three blocks downtown was in the realm of like twenty thousand dollars, I think that was some, and that also included the, some work down at the park.
Down by the pool?
Yeah, by the pool, deep pool part, the sidewalks down there, so we thought we could break it up into like three shifts or three years worth. And they'll come by, it'll identify, we set the criteria for the depth of what they're gonna cut, and then there's also a criteria that the step is over an inch and a half, it's cheaper to hammer that section out and repour it. So they said typically, um, this seven thousand would be just for cutting, and then they'd identify slabs that could get replaced. So maybe next year we would hammer those out and repour those, and then two years from now we would cut another section.
Do they put some kind of a seal around that area that they grind off?
Nope, they actually, they did a test patch or a demo on, right up in front of Third World.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I got where I mean.
Yep. And it's just a, it's one guy, he comes, he's got a little cart, um, it is kind of long, but he's quick and he's clean, and he just kind of, he's self-sufficient, just moves along and does his deal.
It takes care of the problem for twenty years?
Well, until the frost shoots, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it'll eventually probably work its way back out again, but it, it's pretty long-term session.
Yep. It's a cheaper alternative than repouring the wall.
Yeah.
It does put a different look on the concrete from the cotton, but it's the cheap alternative to repour the sidewalks.
It's cheaper than a skate board track. It'll be nice and smooth and.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah.
So, motion to approve the downtown sidewalk repair. So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Well, well, well. Other business, schedule of upcoming meetings, first is Board of Appeal and Equalization, tomorrow, right here, five P M. KMU meeting Wednesday the seventeenth at six P M. EDA meeting Tuesday, April twenty-third at eight A M. S E M L M meeting in Chatfield Tuesday, April thirtieth. And that's regular council meeting Tuesday, May fourteenth at seven P M. Council staff general comments.
Son, we got some high heels built today.
Yeah, they, they brought the first one of spray paint in today.
Yep. The corner of, uh, Sixth and Spring is much, much better right now.
That is a well-known street, isn't it? So, uh, pass on.
Sorry, you see winch when you turn?
It's not, it's just okay. It's just giving us a good bike kiss on his way out.
Yeah. Quite a make-up session.
Have a seat. Scott? Well, I have nothing further to say myself, except motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Yep, thank you.
No.
Oh, no. Yeah, that's what I, I said, you can't, you can't do that, cause otherwise people remove it and they won't, you know, you gotta be really, really cautious when you visit. SNL had a funny thing when the federal government did that, holding security for that one about six months ago, whatever, and everybody said, well.
Good.
It was like a very commercial, you know.
Somebody can.
Is this even news?
Yeah, they're watching it.
Um, I don't know if it's funny back there, but.